A couple of things I wanted to highlight through that presentation to bring a little bit more emphasis to. So talking about the community cohesion, that's a reference specifically to our comprehensive plan. So within our comprehensive plan, that was that green section that talks about attractive neighborhoods oriented around parks, trails, amenities and public spaces. And by offering options for our communities shop, gather and celebrate. Within that too, within the comprehensive plan, there are a variety of community cohesion goals and strategies that were summarized essentially from hundreds and hundreds of pieces of feedback from our community during that process that directly aligns without them, they're talking about it and I go, do you guys know that you're aligned perfectly with the comprehensive plan? So things that they want to accomplish are so in line with exactly the future of Wellington that so many other people voice their opinion about. So I really want to commend them for that effort and hearing the community so well and making sure that they share that message. The other piece that I wanted to make sure I drew emphasis to is later on we'll be talking about our strategic plan. And the planning and development section, I know we are yet to adopt this, but it's been something we've been discussing frequently. And some of those bullet points I do want to mention is identify and promote development of community gathering spaces. Compete, complete a downtown master plan and parks master plan. Consider options for open space and buffer from surrounding communities and promote small town feel through responsible growth and sound financial practices. This entire pillar of our strategic plan has items that directly relate to the feedback that we've received from the advisory group tonight and it plays so much into that. They provided a quick list of five items that they think that they can accomplish in 2023 and that they're driving for. But I also want to note that there is within the packet a wish list as well. Within this wish list are other small, doable, quick items like repainting basketball court to also accommodate pickleball, right? That's one example of those small things. But there's also major CIP projects on this that that are investments in our community. But the point I want to draw here is this is part of our comprehensive plan. This is part of our strategic plan. We've committed to doing a parks master plan next year. These are items that take money and political will to do. So as we can, we stay here, we commend them, we say thank you volunteers for bringing all this to our attention and working so hard in this. We also have to back them with that political will and budget in order to accomplish these things that our entire community and this volunteer organization and group is bringing and is bringing to our community. So I really want to make sure that we have an emphasis there to know that they're doing great volunteer work, fantastic. But these are things that also align with what we're trying to accomplish, what the town has determined that they want to do and see in the future. The future of Wellington. So that when we are determining budgets and we are considering their recommendations, there we're taking those to heart because they carry a lot of weight. And then the last piece I wanted to finish on is when I participated in the youth of the state of our youth through Pooter School District and a million community partners that are trying to figure out ways to improve mental health of our youth in our community. What the youth asked for were very specific items. And a lot of them related to being the sentiment of feeling like they belong, feeling part of a community and having a space to exercise that, having a gathering space to do that. A lot of those items can be accomplished through programming and recreation or all these spaces that they're recommending and developing. And it's very powerful. So I just want to make sure that we acknowledge that too, the mental health benefits of really investing in the infrastructure and planning and development of our parks, open spaces, trails and all of our programming for recreation. So I think it's such a powerful group. They did an amazing job presenting and I wanted to thank you guys for all your efforts and all your hours that you spend doing that. So thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to say great presentation. All of you board members put in a lot of time and effort into this and it's volunteer. I mean, you can't, you can't surpass your guys' hearts and drive to make this community better through having better parks, trails and recreation with this community. I mean, right now I will back you guys 110%. I will do everything I can to make you guys successful because if Prost is successful, this town's successful. We have areas for people to recreate. We have areas for people to gather. And that's important for our community. So thank you for all of your hard work in doing this and putting all of this together. And I'm really excited to see where this future goes.
Also, there is a memorial bench program where people can actually fill out a form and make a donation and have a bench placed somewhere out in Wellington, which I think is just awesome in itself. And I'm very excited to see that on here and excited to see what I can do about investing in putting some park benches in around town. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Okay. Since that was just presentation, there's no call or anything. So just thank you guys. Next item on our agenda is going to be, we're going to kind of switch things up a little bit. So we have an ordinance on repealing ordinance. And then we're also going to have a presentation on the resolution. So that way we can open it up for public comment. So where it makes a little more sense and Mr. Bird will be presenting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Cody Bird, Planning Director. As the mayor mentioned, there's two separate action items on your agenda. One's the ordinance and one's a resolution. They're both related to fees. So I'm going to present both of those together to kind of put it all in context for you and it'll be two separate votes. But the first item is an ordinance, the draft ordinance in your packet is simply put, it repeals ordinance eight dash 2019. Ordinance eight dash 2019 adopted a couple of years ago was an ordinance that established our current building fees, building permit fees, plan review fees and our land use application form fees. So that ordinance was adopted three years ago. Some of those fees are not keeping pace with the current cost of services that the town provides to provide services for development review and building permits. So we felt it was time to propose some updates to those application fees. The kind of switching over to the fee resolution, town has recently adopted a schedule of all the fees that the town charges for products and services. And that was adopted in November of 2022, just a couple of months ago. We didn't include the land use application fees in that effort because they were adopted by an ordinance and you can't change a fee with the resolution that modifies an ordinance. And so it takes these two different efforts. And so we're bringing it all together tonight for you to kind of present that. I've been in front of the Board of Trustees at the February 14th work session to kind of present. These are the recommended changes for the land use application fees based on a cost recovery model. We use some fixed costs for what the town staff uses for postage, printing, mailing notices and providing services for review, public hearings, all those things. So we presented those at the February 14th meeting. We haven't changed anything since then and those that reference materials in your packet for reference. We do include a draft resolution with that updated schedule of these reflecting the land use application fees that were presented in the past. I did also highlight just a couple of very minor modifications on the building permit fees and described those in the, in the staff report. Happy to answer any questions related to those. And then lastly, Mr. Cooksey is here as well. There's a couple of recreation associated fees that are included in this resolution as well. And Mr. Cooksey can respond to any questions related to the recreation fee amendments. So that's the real high level overview, two actions, repeal an ordinance and then subsequently adopt a resolution establishing new fees for the ones that were repealed. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you. We will start with board questions, comments. Trusty Wigan.
I know and I hope and we trust your judgment on everything. I know building, construction has to pay for its own way and that's, I think it was the main directive of what you were trying to do here. So I appreciate it. I know it takes a lot of time, takes a lot of effort. You know, I know a lot of people, not a lot, but a few people don't like pulling permits. You know, there is a lot of value to them. I know when I did my basement, just making sure that I had everything up to code. And it's critical. I mean, you can burn down your house in a heartbeat if you don't do it and do it right. So I think we need to do it. We need to be as productive and as forefront on this as we can be and making sure that, you know, we've got a good, healthy community in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Trusty Tietz.
Yeah, I just have some clarifying questions for you real quick, Cody. In your land use fees, Board of Trustees background discussion, you had said C1 and industrial. You were looking at town staff recommending a fee of a $2,000 variance for applications for C3 and I, but it's 4,000, correct? And the new, so did that change from the last, our last meeting where it was set at a different amount or is the 2,000 the amount that we are looking at?
So I'll try and kind of summarize what's in your packet. The information hasn't changed from anything that was presented at the work session of February 14th. On the variances, going back to October of last year, when we first started presenting information, staff had recommended an increase on the cost of a variance from the current fee, which is $250 for a variance, we'd recommended a fee of $1,000. And that's based on a model for cost recovery, based on fixed costs for advertising, public hearings, posting signs on site, sending letters for, to the adjacent surrounding properties within 500 feet of the application property. And town staff time for review, coordination, collecting comments, preparing staff reports and administering the public meetings. We talked about that in the work session and in pretty great detail on what the, how those costs are, look like from a cost recovery standpoint. And that's where that $1,000 recommendation came from in October. I don't remember if it was the October meeting or the November meeting, but we, staff certainly heard from the Board of Trustees that that felt like a pretty steep fee for certain residential types of applications. And so when hearing that feedback, staff had recommended a change to that structure to have kind of tiers for different types of variance applications. And so what we had recommended February 14th was to propose a residential variance fee of $500, which is about half of what we calculate the expected cost to administer. So that's, that's proposed with a, an intentional subsidy for those residential application for variances based on board feedback to keep that cost low for residents. We all, in looking at splitting those into tiers, we also did a further evaluation. We proposed two new things with that was to tier the commercial variance applications based on scale and intensity of land use type. And so the $1,000 again was, was what was recommended based on a cost recovery model for our fixed costs. The $2,000 was recommended for large sites, industrial sites. C3 includes a broad range of, so C3 and industrial is where we recommended that $2,000 variance fee. And that's based on the scale and complexity of those sites where there's more uses allowed. There's more development standards that can be varied. The application types are quite dramatically different from residential or neighborhood business types. So we had recommended that higher tier for those more complicated applications. And we also recommended a lesser fee of just a flat $500 for each additional variance. Sometimes for a development application request, they might need more than one variance to fit the box for their particular type of of development proposal. And so rather than charge $2,000 or $1,000 two times for one for each variance, that doesn't make sense because we're only, we're only, we're sending one notice with all the information for everything related to that request. So we recommended just a flat $500 for each additional on the same site at the same time. I know your question was a lot shorter than that, but I wanted to be.
No, no. And honestly, you explained exactly what I was looking for. So that was kind of my general. The second question I have relates to the increase in the, the one stop and regular permitting. So, and my question here is more of a statement and I urge the rest of my trustees to definitely consider when we go and increase building permit fees, we also increase the chances of people doing illegal work in town. So when you see a permit fee increase, a regular residential customer who's paying under $1,000 to have some work done at their house, they are, it's not a $75 flat fee. There is additional costs. So an average permit for electrical work to be done is 156 to 180 dollars. That's just the permit. So there is permit issuance fees, there's administrative fees, there's Wellington use tax fees. Laramore County also collects off of the top of that cost as well. So if we're looking at increasing the cost of these fees, we have to also consider the amount of illegal work that actually already is done here in Wellington by unlicensed, unexperienced contractors. You see it regularly on Facebook posts, hired this contractor, learned my mistake, please don't make the same mistake. I understand that we're increasing these fees. So now contractors have to pay a $50 business licensing investigative fee on top of a $25 business license fee for here in Wellington. And then we're also increasing our permitting fees for work to be done in town as well. I would say the customers you deal with that are pulling 10,000 to 250,000 dollar permits, they're not concerned with receiving a higher permit fee. But when you have a resident that wants to simply switch out an outside light, their permit fee to switch out one outside light on their home, just the permit fee, this is not classified contractors, anything is 15625 with those permit fees. And now we're looking at increasing those fees. So please take this into consideration. I don't know if this is something we need to go back and the land use fees, it's explainable, it's understandable, it's cost recovery. What we can do later on to help those businesses with partnerships or items to still encourage the builds here in town for commercial development is amazing and would love to look into options like that. But the other side of this where you're changing permitting fees, these, they're, they're just not going to pull permits anymore. And what happens is, and what we're seeing on our backend is illegal work done, houses are catching on fire. So, and that's fine. That's your personal property. But when the house next door to yours catches on fire as well and the work that was done was illegal work, a lot of homeowners insurances do not cover unpermitted work done in a home. So it's going to make it harder for people around a person not pulling a permit to also get funding for what's been done, done or damages and stuff like that. It's something I'd like to look at whether we approve the land use site and then look at what the one stop cost, because one stop cost, Cody, correct me if I'm wrong. If it's a one stop permit, you're going out for one inspection and it's typically the town of Wellington doing that inspection, correct?
Not, not correct.
Okay.
Be happy to explain some context.
Awesome.
And first of all, really appreciate your, the concerns you're bringing up. And I think I can address a lot of those and kind of respond to that. And thank you for, for giving Ms. Garcia the heads up because I was able to do a little bit of research to kind of prepare to be ready for that. So thank you. First I wanted to, the question at the end of your, of your comments there included the one stop fee, correct? Could you repeat that last, that question? The one stop fee is $75. It's based on, I think the answer to your question, excuse me, was the, the one stop fee is $75. And it's based on one stop, meaning once the, the permit is issued, there's typically no plan review with a one stop permit application. There also maybe sometimes referred to as over the counter. I mean, we don't have to have SafeBilt review that application. It's water heater replacements, re-roof replacements. There's just no plan to review. So there's no plan review charge associated with it. It's a flat fee because it's, it's the assumption that SafeBilt is going to show up on site to inspect that work one time. Sometimes it's two times if it doesn't pass and have to come back and re-inspect. But the assumption is there's no plan review and it's a single stop to do one inspection to final that permit. That's what that, that fee is based on. The one stop fees for water heaters, re-roofs, siding, window replacements, things of that nature are all the $75 fee. And that's per our contract with SafeBilt to provide the services. Electric is a little bit different. The State of Colorado Board of Electric Board, I'll call it the Electric Board because it has a more technical name. But the State Electric Board, a number of years ago, went through a process, they were lobbied heavily by electricians to set a state electrical fee that was kind of consistent across the state so that electricians working municipality to municipality could have some consistency on what to expect. The state set those electrical fees for, for that reason. And so that kind of sets a baseline for the fees that anyone providing electrical services from a review and inspection standpoint has to adhere to. SafeBilt is our, is our review and inspector for those electrical permits and their cost to the town is $115. Now that's what they charge the town for the electrical services. And part of that reason is because the state also increased the requirements for inspection on electrical that when an inspector shows up, if they're inspecting electrical work, they have to be a journeyman or a master level electrician to inspect it. That rules out a lot of the inspectors, a lot of the combo inspectors that don't, that aren't electricians that don't have that electrical journeyman or master certification. So SafeBilt having to hire electricians with journeyman and master level electricians have to pay those employees more. So their cost to provide that service has gone up over the years as a result of legislative changes. So the $115 is a flat, that's for residential electrical too. And commercials is a little bit different. There's more square footage, different types of projects. But most of our electrical one stops are residential and that's a residential electric fee of $115. So that's the cost to the town. That's what's reflected on the permits.
So I know that there's an option. So I would say, so City of Fort Collins, as an electrical contractor, you do not pay the $115. So a permit to pull a one stop is $76 to switch out something electrical in the house. Is there options for Wellington where we have something in-house where it's not $115 for each pull? So I know City of Fort Collins does their own inspections when you call them out. So is that a way to look at maybe hiring an experienced someone who can review electrical plans in-house? And it's not just electrical. I think there's a few others that also see different kinds of fees. But I'm just speaking from my experience. Is there someone experienced that you're not having to extend the higher cost to if we had someone experienced in Wellington, helping with those additional inspections?
Those are certainly things that we can consider. We haven't evaluated that for full house, in-house building inspection. Obviously we have a great longstanding relationship with SafeBilt. They provide a really valuable service to the town. There might be a day in the future where it makes sense from a cost standpoint to in-house all of our building inspection and building review services. But when we, when we in-house those services, we also have to consider the additional cost to the town for employee salaries, benefits, overhead for vehicles, tablets for inspecting the field. So there's, there are costs associated to the town in adding those staff. And we have not performed that type of analytical breakdown on the cost comparison for in-housing the number of inspectors we would have to do to remove ourselves from a contract with a third party inspector for those things. We just haven't broken that down. It hasn't been a request of the board to increase staffing levels for building inspections, but it's certainly something that we can look into further as, as the town grows and find what the best model, the best pricing looks like to keep those costs low for all of our residents and our, and our businesses.
Right. And the electrical aspect, what I was looking at was an example, but we're still looking at even if we do move the under $1,000 to the $75 base. It's not a solid $75 base. There is additional fees that are incurred, correct?
There, there are, but I, can I clarify on one thing too? I'm on page 58 of your packet. This is the, in the fee schedule and it's on the, the building permit fees. Just a quick correction, the town's not increasing any of the building fees except for the proposed highlighted green cells. The, the two, there's four rows kind of near the bottom of the page that are new fees that are proposed based on new services or a service by request, if we needed that from SafeBilt. The two at the very top are the ones that I think trustee Tietz is referring to. And I tried to explain this in the packet as well. But if you look at that, the valuation table for the permits with valuations of 1,001 to $25,000, the previous fee for that was $69.25 plus 75 or plus $14 per each additional thousand over, over the 25,000. So it's a calculation for the, based on the valuation. So we proposed to increase that, that the base rate, the $75 from the 6925 for consistency and ease of creating some expectations that are consistent throughout all of our permanent processes. The, for permits valued under $1,000, a dollar to $1,000, the previous fee is, or the current fee is $25, just a flat fee. And then there is an admin fee. There's no, the plan review fee is a percentage basis from this table. So there are some, some ancillary fees that are attached to that for the town's employees for administering the application, scheduling inspections, answering questions and follow-ups and things of that nature. Again, we, we proposed increasing that fee to $75 to be consistent with some of the other, other applications. Primarily the one stop fee is the $75. Again, that one stop assumption is that there's no plan review, which isn't the case for the projects under a thousand dollar valuation. Those still have plan review that we're paying SafeBilt for. So, but the assumption was that it's pretty minor. It should be a pretty easy review. So we feel comfortable in that fee. But the $25 that was there before isn't covering any of the actual cost to SafeBilt to provide plan review, drive up here, inspect, possibly re-inspect or multiple inspections depending on the project type. So it just wasn't covering the actual cost of the service. So we recommended making it consistent. I was able to do a little bit of research too, and I looked back at, at 2022, I looked at the full year. A full year's worth of data is better than a month. So I'm looking at 2022. There were four permits pulled that, that hit that category. Four of them. So those, those valuations ranged from $600 to $900. And the fees collected were $77. That included the taxes. So that $77 is not covering the cost of service provided to administer those applications. They're a little bit different than the electrical fees. As I mentioned before, if one of those projects included electrical, the electrical fee has a residential electric flat fee of $115 plus the administration, plan review, other things on those permits. So it's a little bit nuanced and I appreciate your kind of sticking with me on that explanation.
That was my concern for 2022. The four permits for anything under $1,000, that's all the permits that were polled. Like that's where I'm trying to explain my concern is a resident that's having a simple electrical outlet installed, they, we get requests constantly and we get scolded constantly when we tell them we have to pull a permit. It's not an option. So I think.
Your, your husband owns electrical company, correct?
Absolutely.
All these things you keep bringing up are electrical?
Well, it's just from experience based. So
So.
The, was it just electrical permits that were polled in 2022 or was that the whole scope of permits under the $1,000?
The, the projects, the electrical projects?
No, just standard.
Right. The electrical projects are fall under the electrical one stop for 2022. The, the four projects that I referenced, and I won't describe every single one of them, but one was a fireplace. One was a gas line extension. One was converting a bedroom or turning a den into a bedroom. So there was, you know, these were pretty minor projects with low valuation costs. But they require, each one of those required plan review, gas lines, you have to inspect the pipe sizing. You have to inspect the layout, the one line drawing. So there's plan review. There's inspection, turning the den into a bedroom would have more than one inspection for rough framing, rough electrical, window framing. So there's, there's a couple of steps in each one of those projects and the $77 isn't covering that that was collected for those applications is not covering the cost of service.
Got it. Thank you. No other questions.
Trustee Gator.
If I use my microphone. So I appreciate the work that you've done, Mr. Burden, explaining this in terms of why we're looking at that. I know some of them are pretty big changes in some of the fees, but I also appreciate that we've talked about as a board that we really need to make sure development is paying its way when we're utilizing town services that we're actually recouping the cost for those. is paying its way when we're utilizing town services that we're actually recouping the cost for those. So I appreciate that we've done the best, best that we can on that. I think that with putting this in the resolution form, my understanding is it's easier for us to make tweaks or adjustments if we find out we're too high or too low somewhere, we can more easily make those tweaks to the fee schedule across the board. Um, so I don't have major concerns with anything on there. Um, I, I think it is important. We, we have talked about this, our prior board talked about this, this board has talked about it, that development needs to pay its way and that's whether that's permits being pulled. Obviously, yes, it's a concern if people aren't pulling permits, but that's again, that's their concern. Um, for me, it's not our job to be big brother and come down on people. And yeah, if you don't get permitted work, it's probably going to be a problem for you. Um, but I think that we need to make sure we're not charging ridiculous numbers for permits, but it should be covering as we can the cost of those because again, if we're recouping the cost that we're expending on permits and building, that frees up money for us to fix potholes, sidewalks, all these other things that people always are coming to us about. We need this fixed, we need that fixed, we need this intersection fixed, we need the overpass fixed. Um, there's so many things that we can do that, but if we're subsidizing, you know, people doing projects here and there, whether it's residential or business, those funds are tied up and they can't be used for those other areas. So I think it's good for us to work to pull those. The only question I had was were, were fees being changed in the recreation portion? Um, I just, I couldn't tell from looking at it whether there was changes in the recreation fees or if-
No. So, so basically in, in general, um, what we're trying to do is be able to be a little bit more flexible. Um, you see all the line items that we have in the descriptions in the fees, um, on a, on a weekly, monthly basis, a lot of these things can change in recreation and programming. Let's say we want to bring in a new program such as pickleball. Right now it's a contractor sport and they're playing for the first time, but if they were to request us to put that in as programming through recreation, we don't have that as a fee schedule. So that would give us the ability to put that in. Um, at no point would we ever charge any more than what it costs to run the program. But let's just say, um, we need a bunch of new bats and bats go up crazy because the manufacturers just don't have a lot. We don't necessarily have that money always, so we might need to increase the fee through, from one season to another, just very minimally within our programs. Um, just to make sure that we're recovering that cost. And we have the cost recovery model that we've been using that was approved. Um, it's within our recreation, um, program that we use for scheduling. So everything is really nicely packed and tight. Um, the idea is just to, just to have a little bit more freedom when things change so rapidly. Um, there's a, a couple other, um, instances I can bring up if you would like some, uh, but really just it's happened so fast that having a little flexibility makes it a lot easier for us.
Perfect. And I think, and I, and I'm totally good at that. And I always assume you'll update Patty or somebody that's that way. If there's a change, we just get like-
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. As long as there's notifications. So if someone comes to me, he's like, hey, what? I'm like, what? Perfect. Okay, that was-
Our goal is to get more people to come in. We're not going to charge and keep people out, right?
Nope, that's perfect. Yeah. Awesome. Thank you. That was my only questions that I had on it. I think this looks good and, um, I think that we, I, clarification, we didn't change any other fees other than the, the, the planning ones, correct? Awesome. Thank you.
Trustee Daly.
Uh, I understand the procedure, reasons for, uh, the ordinance, removing the ordinance and then the resolution. So I'm good on that piece. Thank you. And I appreciate that we're going to be more flexible and able to manage that easier going forward. So I think that's a great move. Thank you for recommending that. Um, and then also I do understand that all the fees suggested are based off of actual calculated costs. Uh, none of them are a ballpark, maybe this amount. It's based off of actual fees and costs to the town and a very conservative hourly estimate of staff time. So with that known and seen that, that each of those recommended increases are based off that factual calculated amount that is still likely under the actual cost of service. Um, I think that those are both fair and reasonable and responsible for us to be charging to make sure that we're not bleeding from this, from this perspective. So that's my feedback. Thanks. And I love the tree replacement costs in lieu. Thank you.
Yes. Trustee Mason.
Yeah, Mr. Burd, Mr. Kuchy, really appreciate, uh, your guys' explanations on this and certainly the, uh, February fourteenth meeting, I think was really important for us to, uh, uh, get some explanations on these things. Um, I'm, I'm totally good with what we have here and I'm going to say the same thing everybody mostly has here tonight, which is, you know, it's absolutely vital that we, uh, recover our costs and we can't be subsidizing fees because, uh, then that money's not going back to the town in other regards. So, uh, I think this is, I think this is good.
Mayor Pro-Ten.
Great presentation, Cody. Now for the comment.
Perfect. Yeah, thank you guys. Um, we hashed it all out and, um, I think, you know, this is a great way to recover our costs. I mean, I don't want to parrot everybody. So thank you. Very well put together. Um, all right. At this time, we will open it up for public comment.
Hi Karen Eifert, I live in Fennels. Um, I guess it's kind of a question. Does he say that there's only been four permits pulled in the past year for work? Or just in that one category?
In that one category.
That one category.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, just in that small category.
Okay. And, um, I, I don't, I haven't done any research on the fees or how much it costs or anything, but um, we probably should be careful, make sure that it's, what did Cody say? Um, it's what the recommended amount is for the area. Um, and not go over that because that will lead people to not want to get the permits. And that makes it dangerous for you to live in your own home because you never know if the person in the next door has done the right thing and if their fire or their drowning of their backyard will affect yours. That's happened to us before. It stinks. But I just think that we need to keep in contact, not in contact, we need to keep up with what the local amount is and what's recommended, but not go over that because then people will not want to get those permits at all. Like shortly I'll be contacting Patty and Cody because my kiddo qualifies to have a bathroom remodification for special needs people. And so all of that work's going to have to be done with the permits. Sorry, lost my place. Um, so I'll be contacting them to do all of that stuff because I know if I don't do it right, not only could that affect my home, my child, but my neighbors, but most effectively would affect my child and my family. So I just hope that we are keeping with what the norms are and not going hugely above that because we do live in Wellington. It's a, sorry, but it's still a bedroom community. We don't have anything huge here yet. We're doing so much better than we were before. We're coming out of a bedroom community, but I'd like to see that keep happening and for the people who want to fix up their homes and to do the work that they need to and decide, you know what? We don't need to move to Fort Collins. We can just fix this home. We can do this. We can do that and be able to afford that in a manner that's not over the top. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, we will bring you back to the board for any final discussion. Trustee Daly.
Oh, I'm ready to move forward.
Okay, Trustee Gator. Good. All right. Um, yes, Trustee Wigan. Sorry, I didn't-
One thing that I think the building people need to do a better job of is selling why they need the permits. That's to protect the residents, to make sure that you don't get some inferior work out there. So, I mean, I know it, I, I hated to pull that eight hundred dollar permit on my basement, but thank God I did. I mean, I learned some more stuff going through that and I've done three or four basements over the years. And I think it's such a valuable asset to the community to have great inspectors that are good building people here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, uh, with no further comments, may I get a roll call on-
I move to approve ordinance number oh-two, twenty-twenty-three and ordinance repealing ordinance number eight, twenty-nineteen in its entirety.
Perfect. Second. May I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Ten McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is going to be resolution number nine, twenty-twenty-three.
Twenty-twenty-three. So I move that we approve-
Oh, yep.
I moved that we approve resolution number eight dash twenty-twenty-three, a resolution of the Town of Wellington, amending the adopted fee schedule for twenty-twenty-three as presented.
Second.
May I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Ten McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes. All right. Next item. Resolution number nine, twenty-twenty-three, resolution of the Board of Trustees, the Town of Wellington, adopting the amended twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-four strategic plan. Presenting will be Ms. Garcia.
Good evening. Patty Garcia, Town Administrator. So I want to say this has been a really fun process for us. Um, the strategic planning process that we went through or, and back in April, May, and then going through the goal-setting process as well, and then refining that strategic plan to meet some of those goals. You had a chance to really think through what those goals needed to be and then what does that strategic, strategic pant, plan need to look like to accomplish those goals? So there's just a couple modifications that were included and, and that information is included in your packet. Um, once, once this final adoption happens, we'll start promoting it, put, you know, we'll make little placemats for your, for your, for your seat. So you can be reminded all the time what those strategic plans, what the strategic plan is. And we'll put it in, you know, posters across town and in our conference rooms and things like that. So it's, so everybody's reminded what those goals are. So before you, tonight is a resolution to approve that amended strategic plan.
Perfect. Thank you. Uh, any comment or questions from board? We'll start with the board. Or we'll do public comments. Sorry, sorry, public comments. Going once, going twice. Sold. All right. Back to the board for any public, any comment. Trustee Mason.
Yeah, I'm very excited to get this adopted. Um, we've been working on this obviously since this, uh, board first, first got in here last April and, uh, I'm, I'm very excited to get this going. Um, we've certainly got a whole boatload on our plate as far as infrastructure projects coming up and I'm very excited to get some of those things tackled. So, uh, yeah, it's good stuff.
Perfect. Trustee Daly.
I appreciate that this, this contest has come before us so many times and, and especially with professional facilitation. I think that's made us been, uh, to be able to really conclude what we're looking for and hone it in. Um, and the fact that we've seen it so many times in front of us and really have had such minor adjustments at this point makes me very confident in this plan. So I appreciate how it's been brought to us and the continuous improvement in this plan. Thank you.
Trustee Gator.
Uh, yes, so I echo a lot of what Trustee Daly said. I appreciate that we've had a chance to work on this, say, known past, we've kind of done it and then we've just kind of moved on. I appreciate that we've kind of come back, tweaked, adjusted. I appreciate we pulled the goals. What was awesome was that we were able to have Mahala. It was such a great idea to have her go through the facilitation. So kudos Patty, kudos to Mahala. Um, it was great to have our own staff work with us through this. So I think that the process has been great. I think we've been able to work through things and it's where it needs to be. So looking good. Appreciate the work.
Thank you.
Trustee Teets.
I think the coolest thing about what we're looking at here started out with a computing, community engagement platform with post-it notes and multiple meetings. Um, the professional, professional facilitation. And this is where we got with it. I think that in having our meetings and discussing where each trustee wanted to focus their goals, these are all of our aligned goals through communications. There's not a goal on here that we didn't take from the public feedback. Put it into conversation topic and then agree as trustees and mayor, sorry. Um, that this is what we were going to work to accomplish based off of our community's feedback. I think that's the biggest thing to take from this is seeing how it started in little paper form and then seeing a plan actually set in place. It was really cool and the steps along the way. I think it's, it's awesome to see. Thank you.
Trustee Wigan.
I agree with what everybody else has said. I mean, a lot of thought's been in on this and, uh, the collaboration I think has been great between the town, all the trustees, the administration. So congratulations.
Mayor Pro-Ten.
Thank you. This working document is something that this board can really be proud of. Um, it really showcases the cohesion that the elected official have with, in working with the staff. Additionally, you know, ten years ago, um, two or three elections ago, um, nobody knew what a strategic plan was and watching Wellington grow up and put together plans that make sense, that communicate to the community that we take their feedback seriously and then put it into a, a platform that shows, um, resolution or that things are actually getting done out there. So putting those goals out there on paper that are measurable is a huge accomplishment for the elected officials, the staff and the community. So it was, it's been a really, um, awesome opportunity to watch the document evolve over time and become what it is today.
Thanks. Uh, yeah. Ms. Garcia, Mahala, town staff, everybody that was involved, thank you very much for allowing us to put this together and I mean, we all came together and came up with a really good stra- strategic plan, I believe. Um, so thank you. You guys are phenomenal and facilitating us. So I, I appreciate that.
Definitely been a team effort, I must say.
Awesome. Well, thank you. Um, let's see. Any further comments? No. All right. Here are no further comments. May I get a roll call?
Motion, please.
On motion.
I move to approve resolution nine, twenty-twenty-three, a resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, adopting the amended two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-four strategic plan.
Second. All right. May I get a roll call?
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Ten McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes. All right. We will now close the regular meeting and open the Liquor License and Authority Board, time being eight oh-three P M. May I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Gator?
Here.
Trustee Daly?
Present.
Trustee Mason?
Here.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Here.
Mayor Pro-Ten McDonald?
I'm here.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so we have two permits for two to separate locations. The first one we will start with is going to be the special event permit for the Lawrence Chamber of Commerce, Cleveland and Sixth Street. Presentation, Ms. Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor and Trustees. So this, this special event permit is a little different from any others you have seen and it is, these types of permits are happening across the state for events where people can get out in their, their downtown area or in a specific locate, location in their community, um, to walk around the various businesses to, a lot of places do, um, like wine walks, Windsor does wine walks. I've, I've checked with other municipalities, Wheat Ridge, Parker, they all, they're all doing something of some sort. So the reason why there are two different, um, permits on your app, on your, on your agenda tonight is that it's the same event, they're just in two different locations. So because they're in two different locations, they require a separate permit because of the mapping that's required based on, um, what's required from liquor enforcement. So all the applicate, the application was submitted. Um, we reviewed it with the applicant. Um, the fees have been submitted. The LC SO and Wellington Fire Protection District go through a separate permitting process for this. They go through our internal special event process. And both, both entities have approved their, the special applicat, the special event application. They don't, they don't take part in the special event liquor permit application. It's, it's, they're two different things. So, um, we, we do try to work together to make sure that our information, it, it comes together. Um, but it's, it is two separate actions. So saying that, I know the applicants are here and ready to answer any questions you have regarding the application, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have regarding the process or, um, the, the, the process or the application itself.
Trustee Gator. I just had a quick procedural question. Is this considered a quasi-judicial issue or that's just with new applications?
That's just with new applications.
Okay, that's all I needed to know. Thank you.
So any other questions regarding the, the application or the process?
I just have one question.
Um, was there any plan or plot submitted- Um, was there any plan or plot submitted for transportation to and from the one area to the secondary area?
So I think that they will talk about, the applicants will talk about the, the activity or the event itself. I can answer questions about the process or the, the, the permit, or, you know, the requirements you have to meet to, to receive the permit, but they will talk about the event. Perfect. Okay, we're good for.
Yeah, we're good for the applicant.
Who, who will be presenting over here?
Look at this. All of you, okay. Sorry.
That's okay, thanks. Good evening, board members, Mr. Mayor, trustees. It's, uh, very much our honor to come up here and request what we're trying to do. Uh, as you know, these, uh, as Patty said, these wine walks and these beer tastings, these things are happening a lot of places. And the, the point of it is to bring awareness to businesses and let them partake in certain activities that logistically they cannot. So St. Patty's Day is coming up, and a lot of businesses on downtown Main Street, our breweries, our restaurants, our other couple salons are going to be doing, uh, St. Patty's Day festivities. And we're trying to bring in other businesses, not just chamber members, but other businesses to be a part of this, so they can partake in the, uh, amount of activity that will be happening downtown and bring awareness to their own little residents or their own little storefronts, and, uh, share in what they do and what services they provide. And it's not just for adults, they'll have, uh, uh, activities for kids and families and things like that to, to, uh, you know, make it a little bit more vibrant area for everybody, which is something that our strategic plan has been after a lot lately, you know, it's that vibrant downtown feel. It'll be pretty vibrant with all this, so that's what we're trying to do, and, and, and have a precursor for how we can go forward in the future uh, uh, with more of these kinds of activities, not just centered around, uh, wine and that sort of thing, but other activities that we can do downtown that might require similar, uh, kind of, uh, logistics. So, um, I'm with Kelly and I'm with our director here, Mary, and they've done a lot of work of going through the logistics of putting this together, having, uh, uh, our crossing guards available, having our tip certified people available, and, uh, making sure that we got all these, this was quite the process to put it together. I would, I say, next time we start a little earlier, but I'm glad town really helped us out very much. The fire department, sheriffs were really good with us, and I think we did dot every, across every team, dot every eye. I think we did, so I'm going to turn it over to Kelly to ask you, she's, she's got a lot of prep work, and she can ask these, uh, tougher questions that you might have, okay? Thank you.
Hey, board, are you excited? I'm so excited for this event. We've been working so hard, and people are getting really ramped up for it. So, yeah, so for your question for transportation, we do have people that have volunteered. We cannot hire them because of legal reasons, um, but they have volunteered to be sober drivers for anybody that would like to have transportation to and from. Um, we've tried to contract with Uber, but you can't do that, right? So that's what we're, we're at with that. Do you have any other questions?
My question really wasn't for to and from home, they're just gonna have to.
To and from Sparge areas.
Yes, yeah, just to make sure that they're not bouncing back and forth and driving back and forth to the different locations. That, that would be my, my only genuine concern, and since it's five to eight, you're going to be driving during a heavily traffic.
Very busy.
Period time as well, so that is just wanted to, um, make sure that we don't send out drunk drivers on the road.
The other thing with this, we're limiting it to ten tickets, so that means it's less than three beers per person. So two and a half beers total with these tastings for each place they hit. So it's not, we're not trying to get a drunken event or anything like that. These are actually just tastings, they're two ounce per place, so it's not a huge amount they should be getting at each location. That helps.
And, and, and to answer that question too, they will start at Canax Automotive, um, and then walk themselves down to the end of, down to the manor, and then they need to get to Sparge with their map to enter into a drawing. So it's not like they'll be driving to Sparge and then coming back, um, because they'll be done with their tasting, so.
Perfect, a directional event. Trustee Mason, you have anything?
Uh, no, I, I think this is great. I'm always excited for the events that you guys, uh, put on, and I'm excited to see you all out there. Um, uh, obviously having the crossing guards out there is going to be great. Um, you know, obviously, the, to trustee Teets' point, it's, it's going to be busy. Uh, uh, so, um, yeah, having the crossing guards, I think out there is going to be an excellent addition. So, uh, yeah, very excited to see this, and, uh, it'll be great, great to see you guys out there.
Trustee Daly.
I've been to several of these type of events, uh, primarily in Windsor, and they are, what a great opportunity. I've never been in so many like eye doctor downtown businesses ever before in Windsor. I've never gone in there. That was kind of a cool opportunity to actually walk in and participate and talk to people in every single business, um, just as a stop on a, on a route, so I think that's great. Um, and I appreciate that you guys are taking on this effort, um, and doing it the correct way, ensuring and prioritizing safety, um, and, and, and putting all this effort to make sure that you're doing it the right way, the site, the safe way, um, and, and really, I, I mean, upholding the reputation of Wellington, so I appreciate that. Um, and it looks like a fantastic event, so thank you for going through all these steps, I appreciate it.
Trustee Gator.
Yeah, so really the only question I had, and I think it's great that you guys are working to bring people together and trying to make it a family-focused event. The only thing that just kind of always is a question for me is if we're doing family-focused events, we have children in places with liquors out there, what is kind of you guys' plan for just making sure that we're, making sure that we don't have minors getting hands-on cups or things that were left down?
This is perfect. So at each location, um, that doesn't currently have a liquor license, we're going to have a tip-certified person at the door. They are only given these glasses that are in the, the shop, they're disposable. They have to dispose of them before they leave the shop. These places are small, so it's not going to be a giant park where there's no eyes on anyone. It's going to be a bunch of people, the tip-certified person at the door will not let anyone leave with anything in their hand, and of course, there's, they're going to be watching for kids, so.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Perfect, come back around, trustee Teets, any further questions?
No.
Okay, trustee.
I get that, at the end.
Sorry, Patty, that at the end of the day is always the goal is, I think that if you can get foot traffic and people moving down and around downtown safely, then I think, I, I, my family is nine years sober, so we don't participate in these kind of events, but we always wish those luck that are actually out doing that.
Oh, I have to tell you slurps instead of having beer, they're doing Boba tea tastings, so. I thought that was really cool that they're doing that. I know, you can go to one place, but maybe next, you know, next time we can encourage other versions.
Trustee Wigan.
But all the shops will have something going on, like a forty percent off, you know, something, or they'll have some kind of special to, to draw you in, so it's not like just come in to drink, so.
Yeah, go shopping.
Go shopping.
Yeah, I know the tips program is really good, and that's going to bring a lot of safety to our community in the process,
and it's great seeing the, uh, businesses and the chamber getting a great program like this. It's just going to make us more vibrant, thank you.
And I see one, two, three, ten tickets that still need to be sold, so get online tonight.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem.
No questions, no comments, great work.
Thank you. Yeah, phenomenal, thank you, guys.
But for seeing you guys.
Thank you.
Any, well, I got to open it for comment from the public, if any public would like to speak, now would be the time. Perfect.
Okay, Dawn Peacock, Wellington. I did want to say that I'm grateful for events that are planned, um, by various groups in town to provide entertainment for adults in the community that don't have kids. So the trick-or-treat thing, not a thing for me. Egg hunt, not a thing for me. When you have kids that are, you know, twenty-nine years old, it just doesn't fly. So I also believe it's a way to promote community bonds and a way to meet your neighbors and invite friends from out of town to show, to show them where you live. Having moved here during the pandemic, didn't really have a lot of opportunities to meet people. So things like this are, are great. I, I personally do not like beer, but it's just, that doesn't mean I wouldn't want to go and, um, and see what's out there, and I want to try some Boba tea, too. Um, it's also an opportunity for businesses to showcase themselves to people that may not have visited them. I've never been to Knack. Um, I'm, I'm sure there's a bunch of places I haven't been to yet, and, um, I'm guessing it'll be a really great revenue night for the businesses as well, and hopefully they're collecting sales tax.
Thank you. All right. Um, may I get a motion to approve?
I move to approve the special event liquor permit for the Wellington area, Chain, uh, Chamber of Commerce, Cleveland and Sixth.
All second. May I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes. And then can I get a motion for the second?
I move to approve the special event liquor permit for the Wellington area Chamber of Commerce, three nine 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 George W. Bush Avenue, unit one oh four and one oh six, or one oh two, one oh four and one oh two, excuse me.
All second. May I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes. Onto town reports, Mr. Sepienza.
Sorry, I was trying to buy some tickets online really quick. Um, wanted to update the board, I, I met with trustee Gator a couple weeks ago, um, to discuss board policies and procedures. I wanted to let the board know that we're going to get back to that, uh, which is everybody's favorite topic. I think we made some really good progress on some, some great ideas on what we could present to the board. So, um, at some future work session, we'll provide, or I'll provide a, a draft sort of handbook, um, kind of spelling out a lot of the things that the boards talked about in the past, so we can have some clarity going forward, so look forward to that. Um, also in the last few weeks, I met with Lyra County Sheriff's Department, um, a few deputies over there, including Sergeant Cherry. We had a really good discussion about the Wellington Municipal Code, the general offenses section, that's chapter ten of the municipal code. It hasn't been updated in a long time, and when it has been updated over the years, that's sort of a hodgepodge of municipal offenses, kind of something grabbed from here and something grabbed from there. They don't necessarily apply, they're not things we necessarily charge in municipal court. So I think there's a lot of changes that, that I would like to recommend, and so this is something that's been on the future meetings agenda for years.
A couple of years, it's fine.
And we've been kind of kicking the can down the road on it, just because I want to make sure it's right. It's going to be a large conversation, so I want to make sure when I actually present it to the board, we have a, we're able to provide a lot of information. I want to make sure I got that input from the sheriff's office, and, and they did a, uh, we had a really good conversation there. So, um, I'm looking forward to finally bringing that to the board in the next foreseeable future. Um, so those are my updates for today, so thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia.
So as you have noticed in the Friday updates, we are finally starting to get fully staffed, which is really encouraging for us. We, um, your, your town, your team Wellington, as we call it, has been wearing multiple hats for almost a year now, if not more, and we are really excited to get our full team and a full leadership team together and, um, introduce our new clerk to you when, when he starts. So, um, looking forward to, to us getting some work done, not just keeping things afloat, but to actually get some work done, so pretty excited about that.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Any staff communications? Oh, no staff communications. Uh, Lermer County Sheriff's Monthly Report, Sergeant Cherry.
Good evening, board. Sergeant Cherry, I'm in Sheriff's Office. Um, in keeping with the agreement between the town and the sheriff's office, we do provide our monthly report. Uh, we're almost into March, but we're going to talk about January a little bit. Um, if I can turn your attention to page one oh eight, uh, that should be in your, your hand out there. Uh, just talking about some of the call categories, you're going to see some, um, some things in yellow that indicate an increase in, in crime, specific, uh, really specific to property crimes, you see an increase. Um, some of the burglaries that, and I just want to kind of touch on some of these very briefly, some of the, uh, three different burglaries in January, uh, one was, um, pretty high-profile, at least for us, High West Storage got burglarized, we did announce that, uh, in, in the January report. This burglary was one of many ranging from Wellington, um, all the way down to Longmont into Windsor, I believe. Uh, we believe that it was the same individuals that committed these crimes. Uh, they also attempted a couple other burglaries, uh, in town. They were unsuccessful in doing so, which was great. Um, one, one of these burglaries was unfounded altogether, and one was a, uh, a circuit board that was staken out of a, a home under construction. Um, so just those burglaries, we did see a lot of thefts, uh, seven thefts in January, some propane tanks from a storage, uh, units, um, uh, theft of tools from one family member, um, one family member taken from another, uh, temp tag off of a vehicle. We did see a couple catalytic converter thefts. Um, surprisingly, they were off of, uh, two thousand eight and two thousand eight, two thousand seven and two thousand eight Toyota Prius. Uh, apparently those are, are big vehicles for, um, for catalytic converter thefts. I guess it just has to do with the, the precious metals that are in those, those particular vehicles. A rare, a plate was taken off of the vehicle, and a camera was stolen out of the car wash. Uh, we did see at least, this says two vehicle thefts, we actually only had one, um, one reported, but it actually wasn't stolen after all. It was an estranged wife that, uh, took the vehicle from her husband, um, and it just got categorized as such. But on the positive side, we did recover two stolen vehicles that were stolen from outside of Wellington, and they were recovered in Wellington, so, um, those, but those don't get, uh, included in here. Uh, some vehicle trespasses, um, let's see, we had, uh, four vehicle trespasses, and they were all in just different areas. Uh, one person gets, uh, pretty aggressive, punched the lock to get into the vehicle, but nothing was stolen. So, um, happy to answer any other questions regarding, regarding those things or any other crimes that you see there. I also wanted to turn your, your attention to page one eleven. This is, uh, January Wellington and non-Wellington units. What you're going to see going forward in two thousand twenty-three, since we added the midnight deputy, you're going to see a lot more activity, you'll see that blue line. That blue line was, was fairly, uh, nonexistent between two thirty in the morning and six forty-five and the six, and six forty-five, just because we didn't have a deputy up here. Uh, so you're going to see some consistencies there, because our deputy, um, that is coming on here pretty surely, they're very, very busy, um, if they're not responding to a call, they're going around and checking businesses and connecting traffic stops and doing those types of things. I just want to make sure that going forward, you understand, um, that's the why of an increase in that, okay? Um, any questions regarding what's in the reports? Otherwise, I wanted to talk about just some things that started to occur in January just with staffing.
Any questions before you continue?
Okay, okay. Um, just want to let you know that, um, Corporal Baker, he's my new corporal in town. He's taken upon himself to start increasing, uh, bar checks, so you're going to see him and some of our deputies, um, walking Cleveland Avenue and hitting some of the, the local bars, hanging out. Doesn't mean that they're going to, you know, hang around forever and make people nervous. Um, but it's, it's their role to do that, and also just making sure that we don't have people that are overly intoxicated, um, but, which would indicate over-serving and those types of things. Um, he's also taken on the task of some monthly training, in addition to what we get in our in-service training down in Fort Collins. He's, he's going to be doing monthly training with all of the deputies. The, the highlight of January was reasonable suspicion, probable cause in the Fourth Amendment, uh, just making sure that we're keeping up on those things. Um, Deputy Schultz, he's just recently been issued, uh, what's called an E-ticket writer, um, and this is basically just, uh, computer gadget. I'm, I'm not technical by any stretch of the imagination, uh, just allows him to, uh, if he writes a ticket, it allows him to pull information out of our computer aided dispatch system to populate a citation, and it just prints out, just makes it a little easier. You're also going to see a second car, we have, uh, we currently have a car in town with an automatic license plate reader. Um, this car can drive around, it reads license plates, it looks for stolen cars, people with warrants and those types of things. Um, we're adding a second car, uh, so that's, that's a good thing, that's going to be going out here shortly. Um, Deputy Wharton B, I'm at, I'm tasking him, is going to be our, our ambassador for the sheriff's office to the Boys and Girls Club. Uh, we need to be, um, we need to be in there a lot more, and he's just the perfect guy for that. He's, he's just so outgoing and friendly with the kids, I think he's just going to be great. Um, Flock cameras, just as a reminder of what Flock is. Flock is basically a stationary license plate reader, uh, the company is called Flock, and. Uh, the company is called flock, and uh they mount these cameras, and these cameras will read cars as they go by. And we are looking for stolen cars, stolen license plates, people with warrants, people with revoked driver's license statuses, missing people. Um, those types of things, and that's what that does. Um, through the permits to the town, uh, there's there's three within the town limits. They're going to be going up probably within the next week or so. Those are going to be up on Sixth Street between Washington um and just south of Cleveland. And then there's three others that are going to be going um outside of the town, uh, but those are still under the permitting process to uh C dot and and do C dot. Just so you know, our our deputies are working hard at doing drug interdiction. Our nighttime deputies, those those guys are ninjas, and they're out looking for for people that are dealing drugs. Um, people that are buying drugs, and they're they've been highly successful at it. Uh, they're working some cases right now that I think are gonna um are going to end in some really positive uh results. So um, I I'm hoping that within the next few months, at least that we can, we can let you know kind of what happened with that. Um, any questions for me?
Any questions from the board? No. Oh, oh, okay. Now we got yeah, we got. Okay.
Real quick, on the drugs.
Microphone, please.
Oh, sorry. On the drugs, are you seeing an increase in spike over the last few years or or what?
Fentanyl is uh is obviously the the drug of choice now. It's it's it is so popular because it is just, it is just ultra cheap. Um, it is, it is surpassing methamphetamine and heroin. We're still seeing methamphetamine and heroin. Um, but you can, you can buy fentanyl because our nation's just been flooded with it. It's just so, it's so cheap now that anyone can get their hands on it. And we're seeing, you know, during traffic stops, you know, we're not seeing gigantic bags of pills or anything in a powder form. Um, but it might be a couple of pills, you know, like I recall not too long ago, uh, we encountered an individual that overdosed after probably smoking one, one tablet. He crushed a pill and and he smoked and he overdosed on that. Um, you just don't know what you're getting when you're buying these drugs, that they're so dangerous. In fact, I just saw a video uh from my last agency of some about four different deputies that that overdosed um from accidental exposure. So we're trying to make sure that our deputies are being careful using their protective equipment.
In comparison to the population of Fort Collins, how is our town in comparison? Or do we got last quite a bit less, more, or?
And you're still referring to drugs? I I'd say it's comparable. I mean, uh, most of the drugs that are that we are finding are people that are actually passing through town, not necessarily residents. Um, our deputies are really good at spotting vehicles that that come through town. They're either stopping at the gas station or they're just driving through. Um, and they'll, they they do their traffic stops, not because, you know, on a hunch or anything like that. They're doing legal traffic stops. Um, but most of these people are coming from um north of Wellington or from Fort Collins, just passing through. Um, people have to get gas in their cars, so um they stop at our gas stations and our deputies are just very observant to to certain types of activities.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I wanted to make a comment on the the bar stops. Um, I I got to participate in one of those recently, and um it was, it was a really cool experience. I got to know the corporal a little bit better. Um, when he did leave, there was overall sentiment of everybody who was around being like, that was really cool.
Good.
That was awesome that he came in here. I've never seen anybody just come in here and and talk and check in before. So I I got to experience that, and it was a great experience, and everybody felt good about it. I don't think anybody felt uncomfortable. They were like, I felt well cared for. So thank you.
Very good. Glad to hear that.
Uh, everything looks good. The only question I had is, are we still on track for our thing in April? Are?
We are. Um, I think I need to push some some definitive information out, uh, obviously, because you haven't received that.
I've gotten some. I just wasn't sure if.
Yes.
What status was.
I think we. I think we. I think we set that dates. Uh, we're still, and then I know that the town board um in birth it is all in, and we're, we've already set kind of what the agenda is going to look like. Uh, we're going to be bringing food, so food lunches on us. Um, so I think it's going to be a good day. I think you're going to have some fun.
I'm excited about it.
Is there signage that goes with the flock cameras?
There is not. You I.
It's not.
Referring to something that's posted on the outside of the camera.
Or something saying that there's a reader, license plate reader. It's it's not a, there's no signage.
No, there's not. It's it's, you really wouldn't even notice it. Um, it's just a a black pole has a camera and a and it's powered um via solar panel. That's that's how it's it's used, and you wouldn't even really know that it's there.
Okay. Curious.
Awesome. Well, I mean, thank you for all that you do for our community. We really appreciate it. Stay safe.
Thank you.
Okay, board reports. Start with trustee Wigan.
I have no reports at the moment, but I do have a question. Uh, since the CAC has been disbanded disbanded, and we have Fourth of July coming up within four months, do we have any type of report on how we're progressing with the planning on that?
Thank you, trustee Wigan. We don't, I don't have a formal report tonight, but we are working um internally as staff. Our upcoming event is the egg hunt right now, and we're working very closely with local churches um to coordinate some volunteerism with that. And Fourth of July planning is already underway. Um, we have um about twenty-five vendors already signed up, and and so we're working um very hard on these events. And if you would like a more formal update, I I'd be happy to coordinate with um Ms. Garcia about finding a date for an event, um, if that is appropriate, if the board would like something like that.
Thank you. Trustee teets.
Yes, I do have something, and this is regarding your previous board report. Um, I do owe Pathy White Dallas, honestly, Ms. White Dallas, an apology. In going back and reading my emails, I actually did refer to her as the Board of Adjustment Chair in the email string that I forwarded. Um, Ms. White Dallas reached out to us, and I responded to an email on that December twelfth and then forwarded that email to our mayor, and I did, in fact, identify her as our Board of Adjustment Chair. So I definitely want to apologize for that. Um, I was not aware that we only had an interim chair and didn't actually have a chair. I actually learned a lot in the investigative process of going back and reading emails. So I'm sorry to you, mayor, for getting that incorrectly and referring to her as such. Um, I definitely will be paying a lot more attention to the Board of Adjustments and who's sitting in what position moving forward.
Trusty Gator.
Um, the only thing that I wanted to highlight, not shouting to the microphone here, um, I tentatively, I know we're still working on dates, but potentially the April eleventh or the first meeting in April, hopefully, um, we'll be doing a presentation to the board, um, just kind of from the transportation pilot program, kind of how that's worked. Um, so I've already spoken with Betty and Adriana, who are the community members that kind of helped run all of this, and then Ms. Garcia and I have been discussing that. So we'll kind of be presenting on where we've been, how we got there, some of the feedback from the community, what we've heard from some of the partners, CSU, um, other people like that that we've went through, and then kind of bring that back to the board. Again, the goal would be to kind of have a discussion. We've reached a point where both Ms. Garcia and I feel that if we want to continue pursuing this, it it's going to have to be something that we actually look at as a town, not saying, hey, we're doing it, but it ca- I'm not the one that can start having the conversations that need to be had. So if we're going to put staff resources towards that, we want to make sure it's something the rest of the board is on board with. So we're tentatively looking at April eleventh. I know Ms. Garcia will work that out with the mayor to make sure that's functional, but we'll probably do it similar to what we did with the um Parks Advisory Board, where it'll be an action item. That way, one, we're going to, there'll probably be just the four of us presenting, but I have asked them to ask members of the community who participated to come out and so that we can hear from them. Um, I also want to encourage people, if there are people who don't want us to do this, they should have that opportunity to share as well. So that would be kind of the goal is we'll do the presentation, and there'll be opportunity for public to address their thoughts on that as well. And then we as a board can have discussion on if we move forward, what that looks like. So I just want to give you a heads up. We're looking April timeframe for that.
That's great. Thanks. Trusty Daly.
Uh, I had the honor of representing Wellington and attending the Youth of the Year competition um at the county level for the Boys and Girls Club, Boys and Girls Club of Laramie County. Uh, two of the youth from Wellington, um, won at our specific club, and then they go to the next level to compete at the county level. Um, so they were already deemed Youth of the Year for Wellington, um, for Sage Homes, uh, Boys and Girls Club. So that in itself is a huge achievement that they got to represent our entire town. Um, and and compete against other winners of other Boys and Girls Clubs within Laramie County. Um, what that looked like was them um doing speeches. Uh, one of our, one of our winners, I think, was nine years old, and she spoke in front of CSU, Front Range Community College. County Commissioners, uh, a ton of other leaders within our, within our county. Um, and they spoke in front of them with uh prepared speeches uh that they actually also did. Um, in preparation of that, they've been practicing these speeches for a long time, and they've given those speeches to um other judges within Wellington, like our staff members and and people who also participate, giving them feedback, who determine who they won in Wellington. Um, unfortunately, we didn't win any of that. We didn't win at the county level, but the fact that they got to participate is huge. In the past, we've had uh Wellington winners that go all the way up to the the state level for competition, and it goes on beyond that within the Boys and Girls Club um organization. So a huge they represented Wellington very well. Um, and they part, a big part of their speeches were talking about some adversity as well, and it was very moving. Um, and then we have some amazing youth in our community. So I wanted to say that I had the privilege of participating in that um and being the community member of Wellington at that um event. My kids went to, they go to the Boys and Girls Club too, so that was a really good thing for them to hear. And it was at CSU at the uh uh Canvas Stadium, so a really cool event. Um, the other thing that occurred last week is Commissioner Kofolos came to town and did a little um meeting, uh, participated with Safe Routes to School um with uh Mr. Benedict um and and the the principal at the Wellington Middle High School. Uh, gave a lot of updates that people have been really waiting for and wanting. Um, it was a really cool session to learn about kind of the growing pains and opportunities that our new school has in our community, um, safety concerns and questions. Um, and some of the really great efforts and organization of a new nonprofit in town that they are, they're working towards, and that's our Safe Routes to School um program, which is a newly formed um nonprofit that's going to be supporting students and making sure that they can get to school in a safe and healthy way. Um, and they'll be moving forward and being more present and available. And we'll need a lot of support in the future too. So I wanted to call attention to them for that. Um, next week we will, oh, tomorrow. No, today's Tuesday. On Thursday morning at T Bar at seven thirty in the morning, if you're an early person, um, come out for some breakfast and lively conversation about solid waste. Um, you uh that we're bringing the the director for solid waste for the county, uh, Kofolos is bringing them in as well. Uh, as well as a representative from Republic Services, Holly, um, a friend of mine, they're going to be talking about the tier one plans um for solid waste, including transfer station and the new landfill that will be north of Wellington. Um, this meeting's usually attended by a lot of Waverly residents. Strangely, even though it's in Wellington, not a lot of people from Wellington come. So I want to put that um invite out. I mean, uh, Wellington staff or town staff is there. Uh, members of our board are generally there. Uh, we have a lot of, but not a lot of residents from Wellington. So if you're interested in knowing more about what the county is up to in to do with Wellington in the Waverly area, this, these are great meetings to attend. Um, they are the first Thursday of every month generally at seven thirty in the morning at T Bar. And then last week, he offered also an evening session for more people to attend. So this one's about solid waste, the new landfill. Um, there's a lot of concerns and questions for Wellington. Absolutely. I serve on the uh on the policy council for this, so I specifically have a lot of concerns and questions. Um, it's a great option and outreach that they're attempting to do that we've specifically asked them to do more in Wellington. So if you want to know more, or you just want to know what's going on or have questions, please come. If you can't, let me know what your questions are. I will pass them along and get you answers too. So and speaking of that, I have that policy council meeting next to next Thursday. So and that will be before we meet again. So I'll come with updates on the progress of that after that meeting next time.
Would you send me the list? I was, I don't know.
Would you send the list
Oh, yeah.
Of the concerns, because I was waiting to respond back on some of that, um, just to verify that they're the kind of the same things that residents have said to me that live more towards the north area of town and it over in that generalized area.
Absolutely.
Awesome.
We'll get it.
And well, I'll send a memo out tomorrow morning. It's something that we've been working on for a couple of weeks, and the goal was to get it to you tomorrow morning.
Perfect. That's all I got.
Trustee Mason.
Uh, I've got the opioid abatement council meeting on Thursday, but that's all I've got to report to.
Perfect. Yeah, I've got the uh, oh, mayor pro ten. Do you have anything?
Nothing new to report. Thank you.
Perfect. Um, yeah, I have housing authority this Thursday, so I'll report back at our next meeting on uh when we go over there. That's all I have. Um, I I think that's a wrap, guys. Um, all in favor, say. Aye.
Aye.